So people can see.
He seemed to think we made progress.
Okay, I call the business Wyndham Public School Budget Workshop Number Two ordered.
Yeah, actually, I believe this is essentially my meeting, isn't it?
Oh, it's your meeting, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Whoops. You were talking.
But we'll call it the order. Six oh seven.
We need effort, John, at six oh seven.
All right.
Call at six oh seven.
Six, yeah, six oh seven.
What have you got for us?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sewell and members of the board. I think what we have tonight is some information that you will be, you and the community will be very, very pleased. What we have done with the presentation for today is that we have looked at the expenditure of the elementary school, middle and high school. Each expenditure is divided into four major areas: instruction, support services, principal, office and facility. Inside of those major areas, or major categories, we have subdivision of those major areas to include certified staff, salaries, to include music and art, to include non-certified personnel, to include textbooks. So each one of the major areas are then divided into some other sub-areas. So you can see the expenditure in each one of those categories. This is much different than when we had last year. We were not able to have this presentation last year, but at the request of the board and the community, we're becoming more specific and providing more and more detail. So this is totally new compared to last year. And it will be in the budget book in the format that it needs to be. However, for presentation purposes, we have it today in a pie chart. And the purpose of the pie chart is for the board and the community to see how the money is being allocated. I mean, as you look at the first expenditure, the first categories here, instruction, support services, principal office and facility, as you can see, the majority of the elementary budget goes to instruction. Chris, you ready?
Yes.
And so we do have, the numbers are there, but as you can see, the majority of the elementary budget goes to instruction. Fifty-eight percent of the elementary budget goes to instruction. And then we will talk about what is included in instruction in a moment. And then you have support services, twenty-six percent. Eight, ten, nine percent goes to principal office and six percent to facilities. And so the next slide is instruction. So what is in the elementary budget when it comes to instruction?
Oh, you've got this already.
Can I have another one? You got one for me?
Yep. These are basically the line item details behind the pie charts, so if you want to reference these, you can. Or if you have questions at a later date, once you have a chance to, you know, reflect on this, you can. These are basically the building blocks of the charts.
Right.
And again, the elementary piece is Sweeney, North Wyndham, Wyndham Center and Natchog.
Natchog.
And those four schools are aggregated in this elementary budget expenditures. And as Dr. Garcia said, we're going to break out each pie piece into its components so that you can see what your dollar is buying as far as instructional services, support services, facilities and at the principal's office.
Beres is not included in the elementary school. Only the four other elementary schools are included here. As you can see, the majority of the, the majority of the money of instruction goes to general education, that would be salaries and benefits of certified teachers. Is that correct, Chris?
That's correct. That's five point seven million dollars of certified and non-certified personnel is the majority, is the bulk of that. The remainder is smaller pieces that relate, you'll see what that relates to. But it's, exactly, it's physical education and all that.
So then the next one would be ESL and bilingual, and then we have music and art and physical education. So we can see right now at the elementary level where we're spending our money in instruction. Any question, board members, before we move on?
And I think the big E, the big ESL bilingual program is the Compañeros program. That's what's driving that wedge. And you can see, you know, we are supporting the music program to the degree that we have a teacher in each school teaching music.
Okay, so, so you're saying that the, the Compañeros program is not part of what's shown here as general instruction?
It's broken out further for you. In other words, it's-
Yeah, but you've combined it with ESL.
You combined it with ESL bilingual.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is instruction, but it's a pie, it's a slice within instruction. If you look up at the top, it says instruction budget.
I understand, and I understand the problem trying to figure out where to put it, but, but ELL and ESL are quite different from, from bilingual.
Right, you're right. So we could move this out and put it under general education. You're right.
Or you could, or you could show it as a separate slice.
Oh, you could separate, a separate slice. Because what Mr. Johnson did, combined it with ESL and bilingual, and this is actually, Compañeros is a dual-language emergent program. So it doesn't fit in ESL and it doesn't fit in bilingual. You would not know that, but that's okay.
No, I-
But it's actually, it's a dual-language emergent program. So it's different.
We could, we could put this-
It'd be better to combine ESL and ELL.
ELL.
Yes.
And, and show those, and show that Compañeros program is a separate piece, you know, of instruction. So if you broke, if you broke the, basically if you broke the purple, they one point eight six seven million out, you probably can show that.
That ELL and ESL is a very small part of that pie, if we broke the one point eight six seven million out.
Yeah, so one of the questions is, is, is ELL and ESL too small a piece of the pie, given the-
Yes.
The, the needs of our particular community.
Definitely, definitely. ELL and ESL is very, very small part of the pie. And necessarily, it doesn't need to be ESL, ELL, it could be bilingual. That whole combination there is very, a very small part of the pie.
The Compañeros program, it's the dual-language program, it's, it's a different thing than essentially the, the ELL, ESL, bilingual, all of that is designed to help young people who don't already, don't, aren't already facile in English become facile in English. Is that correct?
The purpose is totally different.
Yeah.
Totally right.
So we need to look at what we're spending on that. And one of the questions, I guess, that comes out of that is, as I understand, that some of the special education budget is language-related.
The highest disability for us in special ed is speech and language. That's the highest number, that's why I have the highest number.
And, and the controversy there is whether speech and language is basically need to learn English, or whether there's actually some sort of impediment to learning another language.
Well, I think one of the areas that we're working on as, at the district and the state and in the country is making sure that there's a clear distinction between speech and language versus reading. And I, and I think we're still working on that. I mean, we are not the only district in the state, but there is more room for improvement in that area of differentiating between the need for speech and language services versus the need for reading.
Yeah, well, what, what I'm after is, is trying to separate out what we're actually spending on programs to help young people whose heritage language is not English become proficient in English.
Okay.
Whether it's English language learning, English as a second language, or bilingual education, or whatever it is. And, and I suspect that, that one thing that's going to come out of that is it's going to look like we're spending too little on that area.
Well, yes, definitely, definitely. Remember, you don't have, we do not have a program per se. It was dismantled a couple years ago.
Yes, I know, and you're-
So we're bringing it back.
And you're bringing it back.
Bringing it back, yeah. So one of the priorities for next year is to bring back in some fashion, some way, some way of bilingual ESL instruction. So we do have ESL teachers, but still, we do not have a, I will say, a systemic program in place.
So what we're showing in the budget is what we're planning to spend in the following year, including restructuring the bilingual education budget.
Well, some of the, some, we are planning to receive a grant, it's not included here, we're planning to receive, we're one of the-
Is that the pilot?
Right, the pilot. So, so we already, we already been granted, the, I guess, the application has been granted, we have not received the money.
All of that's good. I just, I just would hope that when we present this to the public, that we, that we show them from the budget perspective how small a slice we're actually putting into that. And I think it's, I think the argument can be made that if we're really going to have success in this district, that slice has to grow.
Yeah. Okay. We can look at this, Chris.
Yes. We can refine it for the-
So we're underfunded.
For the next budget presentation.
You know, um-
I suspect.
No, no, you're, you're right.
I want to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Markey. I know we're in the middle of this, but she was very instrumental in really helping us get this out today. I mean, Chris has worked very hard, is, as you can see, we're shifting the paradigm shift here of how we're presenting the budget. A big shift, right, Chris?
Yeah, I think the programmatic view is what people were asking for, so we did our best to deliver.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have two audiences here for the budget.
Yeah.
We have the Board of Finance, which was happy with the-
With this.
The miracle sheets that, right, and they're used to dealing with them and prepared to deal with them. And so the, the template for the budget presentation that we made last year, but the Board of Finance said they were happy with it. I mean, it seemed like it was transparent and they understood it. The difficulty is, is once the Board of Finance says, fine, then we have to go to a public that is not as adept at reading essentially bookkeeping statements.
It's more like a P and L, what we presented before.
Yeah.
Not that this isn't, but it provides at least a perspective on each slice of the educational department, by department by department, which I think helps people understand.
But I think what you're preparing here for the, for the public is a good thing, because it's going to make it much easier for people who don't want to wade through tables of figures to understand what's going on.
The combination of the two would be the best, of course.
Exactly. Our, our book this year will have both, the combination of both, the numbers and the charts.
Okay. Now, the, the pie charts are not going to show up on television.
Yes, they're showing up.
Well, he could, he could point the camera at them, but they're still going to be hard to see.
No, no, there's a feed in from-
So these are going to end up on our website, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Wyndham, WyndhamPS.org, that's the easiest way to find the website. So for people who see this and want to see what we're talking about, by the time they see it on, well, if they see it as a rerun on TV, they should be able to go to WyndhamPS.org and, and find the pie charts that we're looking at.
Brendan, thank you for helping us out, really appreciate it.
Yep.
So if you don't have any question about instruction, can we move to support services? And here you will have your, your special education. So in the first one, we're looking at instruction, general instruction, and here we're looking at special education and, and other related services. Speech pathologist is in here also, and support instruction, and I will not say it's a random category, but we decided to put all of these that are support services under what we call support services.
Well, now, the speech pathologist, most of what the speech pathologist does is special ed work, correct?
You're right, totally right. So we could put that under special ed. We was by design, we wanted to break it out separately because we wanted to show how big-
It's the biggest piece of special ed.
Exactly, exactly.
I think it's worth, you know, maybe it ought to have a little footnote that notes that the reason we're spending half a million, close to half a million dollars on speech pathology is because of special ed. I mean, it's four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in speech, but that, you know, that, that doesn't seem like something that ordinarily is associated with education, except for the case of special ed.
Right.
And it's really a difficult, difficult service to provide with our own people. It typically has to be provided through contractual services.
Well, we know it's highly specialized and, and they're, and, and the profession is not producing enough of them at the master's level to serve the need. So we have to contract that work out. If we could find our own speech pathologist and keep that person in-house, we could probably save-
It's a, yeah, it's an issue. The other, the other area that caught my attention today is the social worker. As you can see, that's a very big piece of the pie also. I, I mean, very so. Our students come with lots of different needs and is, is a crucial part, but is also a very big part of the pie.
Yeah, I would, it'd be interesting to compare that to what we're spending on ESL and on language instruction.
Actually, this is smaller. This is smaller.
Smaller, so we're spending more than that.
No, 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 I mean, ESL is, no, 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 ESL could be even a little smaller than this.
Yeah, well, that's what I-
Yeah.
That's why I'm breaking out ELL and ESL, and even if you combine-
Right.
ELL, ESL and bilingual services into a single category, I, you've got nine hundred thousand dollars in speech pathology and social worker, which attendance, that's, that truancy?
Truancy.
Yeah.
That's a very small piece of the pie.
Yeah, probably it's mostly social worker.
Right. No, we have a truancy officer.
And most of that's related to special ed.
We have a truancy officer.
Yes, I know, but he's not four hundred and ninety-four thousand.
No, 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 he's one, one person. This, this is basically social worker.
Yeah, social worker is plural.
Yeah, social workers. We take care of that, that too, so.
Yeah, that's, but, but, okay, so, but are the social work is mostly involved with special ed?
They, they do both. Their majority of their work is in the area of special ed, correctly, but they do other areas.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so then we go to the principal office, and here you will have the class of administration and administrative services, both. And so, Chris, you can help out in this one.
Sure.
So as you can see here, this is elementary principal, but this includes all the principals and assistant principal and their secretaries. Are the secretaries included here?
No, that's non-certified personnel.
Non-certified personnel.
That's the four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and one.
So how many people are represented in that four hundred and thirty-three thousand?
Um, I'd have to tally that across.
These are the four schools. These are the four schools. I don't know if we can include-
I'd have to get back to you on that, Dr. Sewell, to count exactly the FTEs.
I suspect it's a larger number than it ought to be.
Yes.
That's, that's one of the, that's one of the places where it, it looks to me like we're, you know, we're spending money-
It doesn't tell you the FTEs.
Over time, repurposed elsewhere.
Is that the secretaries that we were talking about?
Whatever non-certified personnel is. I mean, some of it's custodians and, and crossing guards.
Did you put custodian in there?
And those are all important.
No, 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 no.
Custodians are in the facilities area, Dr. Sewell.
In the facilities, right.
Oh, yeah? Where, where do we hide the custodians and the crossing guards?
In the facilities.
The facilities, Bajo Dukes, yep. If you go to the next page, you'll see the facilities budget.
Oh, okay.
And you'll see the personnel.
Okay.
And that's the majority of the personnel is custodial staff.
Yeah, but each school has two secretaries. So if, these are four schools, these are a compilation of four schools. Do you include a pre-K in here, or no?
Um, no, not pre-K. Only pre-K that's embedded in the, in the elementary schools, not-
Yeah, but, but not-
Not Head Start or-
Not, not the program at Kramer?
No.
No. So you're looking at at least eight secretaries.
Okay, so we have-
Four schools.
Four schools, four principals, four assistant principals, right?
No, you have four schools, that, for, one assistant principal, because only one school has an assistant principal.
Okay, so there's-
At the Wyndham.
So the seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in administrators is assistant principals and assistant principals, correct?
You have assistant principals and principal.
So that's, that's, that's five people?
For the elementary school?
Yeah, that, that number looks, that number looks real, given what they're, I mean, if that includes their fringes and everything.
Two, three.
Includes their benefits.
Four, five.
That's a bargain.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is, why is the, why is the non-certified personnel half that number? That seems way high.
You know, personnel?
So we have five administrators across four elementary-
Five administrators, eight hundred thousand dollars roughly.
And then you asked for what, what else did you want to know?
And the non-certified, what you have in there, the secretaries, is eight of them per school?
Um, eight per school?
I mean, two per school, so it's not going to be eight.
Two per school for four schools.
Eight.
So you have eight.
Right.
I, you know.
So we have to finish, how many FTEs?
Four.
So we eight.
I'm, I'm thinking that we're top-heavy in, in non-certified personnel, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, not in the-
Especially given that we've already agreed that we're shortchanging English language instruction, and we need, and we're not going to find, you know, we're not going to be able to reach in the taxpayers' pockets for-
It is eight. So- Secretaries in the non-certified classification.
Okay. But it seems, you know, the, the things that you can't-
Give a calculator.
You can't do, you know, quickly, but you need to focus on doing, which is, we need to repurpose some of that resource. Which, we're, you know, I think we're going to find that throughout. We're fully computerized. I mean, you know, when I, when I joined, when I joined the university faculty-
Fifty-four thousand, yeah, with benefits, yeah.
When I joined the university faculty, faculty members did not type their own correspondence. When I retired, faculty members all typed their own correspondence, right?
So this number is salary is only, Chris, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's not-
I'm sorry, it's both, it's fully loaded. It's salary and benefits.
Yeah, so, so that makes sense. Fifty-four, it makes sense, fifty-four thousand. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're not top-heavy in administrators, we're top-heavy in non-certified personnel.
We're not, you know, I said this over and over, and I need to figure out how I communicate over and over, we are not top-heavy in administrators.
No.
Not at all.
But, but I think, I think given the amount of technology that's been introduced into the system the last 20 years, we're top-heavy, we're top-heavy in non-certified personnel throughout the district.
And if you look at their salary, we're not top-heavy in their salaries, either.
No, their salaries aren't heavy.
At the administrators, so we're not top-heavy-
Fifty-four thousand dollars plus benefits, salary and benefits, that's-
So that's, that's not even a hundred thousand in elementary?
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're moving now to facilities.
So personnel includes custodians, crossing guards, security.
Yeah.
Yes, all three classifications, it's, um-
All those folks.
Yeah.
So, Chris, could you address the maintenance and repairs? That's, that's a number for four schools, maintenance, service and repairs for four schools?
Yes.
Twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, that does stick out, doesn't it, Paul? It's, actually, twenty thousand is only for one of the schools. Wayne houses all the other custodial supplies in his main office budget. So part of our task is to put back out some of those custodial supplies to the schools to break them out of his budget.
Okay, so you're saying-
But you're twenty thousand dollars for, for maintenance and service? Maintenance, service and repairs?
Maintenance and repairs. That's, maintenance and repairs is basically custodial supplies. Just one school's custodial supplies. Wayne has his, the rest of the custodial supplies centralized and repairs centralized in his offices.
So why have we got one school operating differently from the rest of them?
That, that's a question we addressed today. We addressed that today. So you have to be some consistency.
No, I think what, what we'll do is, um, once Wayne finalizes his budget, we'll allocate all of the pieces back out to the schools as far as custodial supplies goes. But he, he budgets typically for each location, the custodial supplies.
But this is repair, this is repair, Chris.
No, but that's also, but I'm telling you, that's what's included in there.
And what about other supplies and materials? What do you include over there, any other supplies and materials?
Uh, let's see.
Keep in mind that this, this change and this shift in, in budget development is going to be a work in progress.
Of course, of course.
But it's much better, it's much more transparent.
Oh, certainly. I'm certainly not criticizing Dr. Garcia, I'm just curious about the very low number that we're seeing.
Definitely. I do want you to know that we met today and we discussed that, that number just popped up right away. And so we're trying to find an answer. And if you take a look at-
We have four.
One school is the one that has that number, and it's their Wyndham, the others don't have anything. So that, that's not possible. That's not possible. If you look at your chart here.
Right, and that's the point of this whole, this whole process is, is to develop, develop a transparent and, and understandable reporting system.
Yeah, so if you look at, if you look at the sheet-
Typically, his budget is broken out between utilities, which is above the non-instructional buildings.
Right.
And then, so that would be your electricity, your gas.
Is, 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 is infrastructure service included in that three fifty-nine?
Um, it is not. It's just purely our utilities.
Electric, gas.
Yes, electric, gas, diesel.
For elementary, just for elementary.
Just elementary.
Yeah, so that could give us a very big piece of the pie also.
Yeah, and, and so-
It's close to a hundred thousand dollars per school.
Hopefully, hopefully, in the course of, in the course of our ongoing history, we can-
Thank you.
Take a, a page from the middle schools' process.
On the solar.
Putting solar systems and PVs on the roofs of all of our buildings, because that one, that one moderate size, that's not a really large system, is going to save us, you know, a million dollars in, in 10 years.
Yeah.
That's not a small piece of change.
Yeah, that's, that area is ripe for savings.
Yeah, and switching over everything to, to, to energy-saving devices like LED bulbs, bulbs and fixtures, those save, those save huge amounts of money.
Yeah, Wayne's been really good in moving from, from fuel oil to gas over the last couple of years, so.
Okay, so if we finish with elementary, now we can go to the middle schools. So this is, I like the way how this is breaking down this time. Now you have elementary school, middle and high school. So we can answer the question, what are we spending in middle school, what are we spending in high school? So somebody asked, well, how many FTEs do you have now in the middle school? We can say, this is the cost of eighty FTEs at the middle school. So we're very pleased with that. So now we went to the middle school, and we have the same categories, instruction, support services, principal office, facilities and co-curriculum. Because the middle school now have all the sports events and after-school programs, et cetera. So again, the biggest piece of the pie goes to instruction, and we will discuss what is instruction in a second. Support services also is a very big piece.
Yeah, the, the thing that's interesting here, you know, one of the things when you put these pie charts out is that people start looking at-
Yeah, comparison.
Okay, so suddenly you see that principal's office is about nine percent in the elementary schools, and about 12% in the high school, but it's-
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent in the middle school.
But we discussed that already, so we're-
Now, the middle school has more students.
The middle school, more students, but also the structure that they have, the model that they have, of the academies.
So we already know that we need a plan to reduce that percentage over time.
Definitely, over time. We already, we already started looking at that.
We've talked about, we've talked about that, so.
Yeah, so keep in mind that the middle school has a turnaround plan, and we have to adhere to the turnaround plan. And, and the model is working. The, the model is working. What we need to do is how we transition from that model to something more cost-effective without destroying what is in place and is working. So, it is working, but it's a very, very high expensive costly model. And so, although we understand that we want to move to something that is not that expensive, I, I think we need to have the transition in phases, because we want the middle school, we had the review today of the middle school, and by the way, it was a totally different middle school than last year. All the areas that we received, one last year, we're getting two this year, and all the areas that we received two last year, received three today. I mean, I, I mean, it was just a big turnaround. But, we want to get up to five. You said from one to five. So, I understand that we need to transition, and I agree, it's a very costly model, but the model was able to get the middle school in place to do the other things that we needed to do. But, you know, class, class size is very small in the middle school because of the model. So, I think we can move to two academies instead of three. That will eliminate at least about twelve.
Yeah, we'll get it back in line.
Members, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Haney, would you like to come join us?
Please.
I apologize for being late.
But, would you come up and join us so you can speak in? We're, we're actually recording this, so if you want to participate, take a chair near your microphone.
Come sit, come sit next to me.
Thank you.
Paul Haney is our liaison from the Board of Finance to the financial audit committee.
Do you have everything?
Yes, thank you.
Good.
Do you have any questions so far?
Uh, no, I've been writing a lot of notes, so I, uh, I've been taking a lot of notes. So, I will ask, thank you.
So, any question about the four categories here? Instruction, support services, principal office? Oh, so.
Something ringing, buzzing?
So, what's this?
Technology. So, we're in the instructional budget, and so we're looking again, uh, instruction, and then we have this one break, English language learners. Or languages, history, social studies, math. We, we break this one down. Physic, education, music, technology, I mean, so here you can see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
So, the ESL bilingual here is in the twenty-nine thousand.
Which one is this one, three twenty-nine?
ESL bilingual is three twenty-nine.
But, again, here you have the compañeros middle school.
Okay, so the compañeros is included, it's in that.
Yeah, the compañeros is in here.
So, we probably need to find a way to.
Okay, that makes sense.
We probably need to find a way to break that out so we know how much we're spending on.
We will do that.
Dual-language school versus.
So, you have ESL, ELL and compañeros in three twenty-nine?
Right.
Okay.
Right, as we, as we go forward, looking at, at the scattered nature of compañeros and the different schools.
Were you able to get to?
Would be really helpful if we're thinking about a single academy.
And interestingly enough.
I, I want, I want to point out, look at the amount of money we're spending in math instruction.
Yeah, that's, that's, well, I was going to ask you.
And, and English instruction.
Mm-hmm.
And then, general instruction, it's on.
Yeah, what is, what is.
The reason general instruction is small at the middle school is because we've, it's primarily, it's primarily just the, um, these non-certified and operating expenses of the, of the entire school, because all of the disciplines are broken out as you see. So, whereas before, the K through six, um, education was in the general piece in the elementary schools, it's now broken out into all of the departments.
Yeah, but what is general?
What's in general?
Why didn't you, why didn't you?
So, but I, um, I'll be specific about that.
Yeah, let's look at what is in there.
So, general instruction at the middle school is, as I said, non-certified personnel.
Okay.
Okay, that's paras.
Non-certified personnel.
And, um, a certified substitute.
Substitute.
And, um, operating expenses. But, the biggest pieces are, um, the non-certified paras, the, the substitute, um, substitute teachers, and, um, the other piece is, um, what is, what is this asterisk? Kelly services, substitute, that's the other substitute teachers. Adds to the tune of seventy-seven thousand per annum. That's when people go on PD or are otherwise not in the, in the school. We utilize a Kelly services to fill the position.
But, I mean, it's a little peculiar in that when somebody comes in from Kelly services, they come in to teach something.
Right.
So, if they came in to teach math, they should show up in the math budget. If they came in to teach English, they should show up in the English budget. I mean, we're paying them to teach math and English.
I, I know, but I could, we could argue a different point to that, and I see your point. I see your point. But, keep in mind that although they come, they come in to teach math on that particular day, the teacher that is in that position is also getting paid for that particular day.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so maybe we could say, okay, how much it costs us in addition to the math teacher to teach math, but we do need to have the substitute line to see how much it's costing us per substitute and per school. And we break it down per month. I mean, I can tell what month we have more substitute than other months in the district by school. I can tell what day we have more substitute than the district. Wednesday, for some reason, is a day that we have a lot of substitutes.
I'm just thinking of this thing. Now, once again, most of these charts are for the public.
Right.
And, and if the question is, how much are we spending teaching math? And the public doesn't care about certified versus non-certified. They, they care about how much we're paying to spend, to teach math, right? Or not?
Obvious.
What do you think?
I, I think so, but I think in terms of your substitute component, I mean, that's a question that's come up many times in the past, is what are we spending for substitutes? How much are we using? The, the district has used that again to set personnel budgets. I think, I, I tend to agree. I think it's best kept in its own little.
Except that if you put it in general instruction, you're not seeing what we're spending on substitutes, because that includes the paras who work with special ed students and a whole bunch of other people.
But, we could break it out.
But.
But, we could break it out.
Could you? I mean, that sounds like it would be extremely tedious to be able to.
Well, it comes under.
Well, you don't want to necessarily put it in little wedges in the pie chart, because it makes the pie, this is a fairly complicated pie chart already.
Right.
But, not in the pie chart.
There's some things you can put in footnote.
Maybe not in the pie chart, but maybe in the line for the Board of Finance, because we do want, you know, I, I have to say, we do want to know how much we're spending on substitute. For superintendent, I need to know, per month, per year, am I spending more this year, less this year? And if I'm spending more, why? Is that a attendance problem? That line has to be very specific.
So, you can't, you can't bring that out as its own separate.
Yeah, well, as I said, we could bring it out as our own separate.
As its own separate line, not necessarily related to each academic.
And it's line five eighty on this chart, if you look.
So, it is in the tables that you're presenting.
It's in the tables, but it's lumped together with regular secondary education.
The question is, so, so my question isn't so much what we're showing in the Board of Finance.
And then, travel and other?
Yes.
So, maybe that can be.
I think, I think it probably would be best, this is to, to break it out separately from travel.
And Kelly services is separate from district subs, because long-term subs go through the district.
Long-term subs are above, right.
Okay.
Certified substitutes is the request. It's line one hundred. It's like the third one down.
So, yeah, what I'm saying is that the Board of Finance has got the detail, but the question is, what's the best way to show this to the public?
Well, I think the best way is to break it out and be specific, so people can ask the question.
If that's.
Because if it's combined with travel, you know, it doesn't look.
But, be specific to substitutes, not necessarily for subject matters.
Which others?
Outside, third-party substitutes versus our own internal substitutes.
Well, um, what do you think? It seems to me that the public question is, how, how much are we spending to have classes taught by people other than the teachers that we hired to teach the classes? From the public's point of view, I don't think they care where we got a substitute, whether it's Kelly services or internal. If we're paying a substitute, then that means the teacher that was originally hired to teach the class is not there.
It's only from an accounting perspective that we care, because the state wants it broken out.
Yeah, but.
The state wants certified people in one area, and then it wants, if you, if you contract with somebody, it wants another.
But, you got it in the tables. I'm not concerned about the tables, I'm concerned about the pie chart that we're showing the public.
But, are, but in that pie chart, are you going to be able to differentiate between personnel that's supposed to be teaching that course and the sub?
Well, well, if he, if he, if he shows, if he shows that we're spending, what is it? Seven hundred, which one is, which one is it?
Two eighty-seven.
No, I'm looking at math.
Oh.
Math is seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That's how much we're paying math teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Then there's some number, we're paying substitute, we're, we're not talking about now about showing how many substitutes we hired to teach math, we're talking about how much we hired for, how much we paid for substitute teaching, right?
Right.
As opposed to just throwing it into the general instruction, you know, separating that two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars into substitute teaching versus people who are regular district employees like paras.
I, I think we could do that, and I think it should be in this. I wouldn't know if I wanted to do it other.
The table ought to have as much detail as the Board of Finance wants.
It should, it will be here. It will definitely be here. So, when we look at middle school, that will definitely be here.
Yeah, that's, well, I think, I think Mr. Johnson just pointed out it is there.
It's there.
It just, you know.
It just needs to have its own line.
Again, we want to be more clear, because it doesn't jump out at you. And I think if it jumps out, it's probably a more transparent, um, presentation, so it's not like we're trying to.
Right.
It's just, it's, travel and others, Kelly services, other being the Kelly services, which is other purchased services.
Well, that's the entire point of the process.
Travel and purchase services are in the same category together.
Seven thousand?
And Dr. Sewell is saying, you know, maybe it should be somehow brought out, separated.
We can do that, that's easy.
Separate line.
Separate.
In the pie chart, so it's not.
Well, or even, you know, like I said, this is a fairly complicated, this particular pie chart, it's got quite a few slices in it already, so one of the things that you can do is just.
Footnote maybe.
Put a little footnote down, and it says, you know, what fraction that two hundred and eighty-seven thousand is.
Sure.
Is paras and what fraction is substitutes.
Right.
Yeah.
That's clear.
How much is Kelly and how much is certified substitutes that we have on long-term?
Long-term subs.
Okay, we're going to have to move along.
Yeah, we have to move along. So, we're going to the middle school support services, and that includes your special education, other for your guidance counselor, your social worker, your health services, and as you can see again, special education is one of the biggest pieces of it.
Yep. And, once again, uh, okay, but we don't have, so, so we don't need to break out speech pathologists separately in the.
Do you put in special in here? You put in special?
Uh, speech pathologist was not a separate category.
For the middle school.
In the P and L, so I don't, that's why I didn't.
That's all right.
Break it out.
It's just, what you're saying is it's not big enough to.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, I think that speech pathology, um, I think it depends on, a lot of times, the central office might house some speech pathology, and it's not showing up at the middle school. But, they obviously are getting the services. But, it's not, it's not expensed to this location, because it's district-wide.
Okay, so it pops up again in the, it pops up again in the high school service budget.
So, I think it all depends on whether we have a dedicated person there or if we don't have a dedicated person there.
I, I think we, that's an easy fix, and that go back to the first question that you had, is the consistency. We need to make sure that there's a consistency in how that is coded in each one of the schools.
Yeah, because we know.
Because the middle school has speech, and has lots of speech. I'm pretty sure it's coded in special ed, Chris, how much you want to bet?
It's, it's in, it's in that nine hundred and eight thousand dollars.
It's in special ed. It's in special ed. It's in special ed. So, we have to go back and say if we're going to put it in special ed or we want to code it. We decided to do it in elementary, separate, because.
Because it's a big chunk.
It's a big chunk.
Okay.
But, the middle school, I'm pretty sure Ms. Parker can tell us, has speech pathologists, right? Middle school do receive, does receive speech pathologist services. Middle school student.
They have speech pathologists, but it's under, um, we have a speech and language assistant, and we also have a contracted speech and language.
Yeah, yeah, so they.
Yeah.
It's broken out.
Yeah.
So, are any of our speech pathology services in the district at any of the schools' staff?
Yeah, yeah.
We have, we have speech pathologists on staff.
We just don't have enough staff.
We don't have enough.
We have to, we have to.
If we can hire a pathologist, I think in some cases, we have SLPs.
Are you asking if they're part of public schools?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we do have some that are, but there is a significant shortage of speech and language pathologists.
Right, we're aware, I'm aware, thank you.
That's been for a very long time.
Yeah, it's, it's endemic in the entire profession.
So, math teachers, bilingual teachers and speech pathologists, put that in your list.
So, yeah, but in terms of, of the budget, so we get, it pops up again in the high school, and it pops up as a fairly small number, sixty-three thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
You know, so the question, it, it's a coding question, I think.
It's a coding.
And, and, and I, and the question is, since we have in-house speech pathologists and outside hired speech pathologists, we name, we, when we create a category called speech pathology, we may not be capturing all of.
No, whether it's.
I suspect that the high school number is really bigger than sixty-three thousand.
Whether we hire, it should in theory go to the same category, even if, if we have the person employed, or it's called pupil services, which is an expense. In either case, it would go into the speech pathology category.
Yeah, but, but we could, we could, in our chart, in our chart here, look at contracted services, what it costs us, and staff services for speech pathologists.
Well, I suspect that some attention needs to be paid to how expenditures are classified.
No, contract services.
There is a, there is a coding problem.
But, we do know that.
You can see it under a consideration.
Speech pathology is part of.
Special ed.
Special ed.
Definitely.
Okay?
Okay, so we're moving on to principal's office, and this is middle school, let's keep that in mind. So, I mean, did we finish the middle school principal office? Did we discuss it? I thought we did.
Yep.
Okay, so we talked about that, middle school.
And we've already talked about the.
The academies?
Yeah, and, and the fact that it's creating more particularly non-certified personnel and.
And administrators too.
Yep.
And administrators.
Yep, we know, we, we need to work on that.
Yeah. And so, you have your facilities budget for the middle school? Again, personnel is a big part of that.
It's primarily.
Well, and the supplies and materials, that, I mean, it's, it's, so, so I'm, I'm assuming that most supplies and materials are actually held in the central office budget and allocated out as they're needed to the schools?
Yeah.
Is that the way it's being allocated?
It looks in this case that they're allocated out.
Mr. French, to join us. Mr. French, please join us.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on. He, he need a copy, Jolene, can we get him a copy?
I can.
Yeah.
I was having a play out there.
No, no, no. That's not allowed.
Okay. Do you have any more?
No, I think that's, that's exhausted.
What exactly is co-curricular? I mean, it's only twenty-four thousand dollars, but.
It gets bigger at the high school, but.
Band, art.
It stipends for.
After-school programs, not the.
For either athletic or non-athletic stipends. For the middle school, it's.
Small.
Yeah, it's, it has to do with non, yeah, there's.
Band, theater, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it's primarily travel for athletic activities and non-athletic activities, because they, they go take buses to different events for athletic and non-athletic.
So, the eight, the eight thousand is those travel.
So, in the middle school, it's twenty-three thousand dollars. In the high school, it's half a million.
Yeah, it's huge, because we have a lot of athletic stipends that go to referees and such.
We don't have referees in middle school games?
What you have, what you have, well, it's something to look at.
Also, the teachers get stipends.
Yeah, but the middle school doesn't have the amount of sports that the high school has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They also don't have, I think, all of the after-school type of activities that might be non-athletic. might be non-athletic.
Yeah, there's, there's drama here, there's band, there are after-school, things like TSA that need travel. So at the high school, there are more after-school.
I mean, so, so I guess the argument here is that we're shortchanging the middle school rather than paying too much for the high school. Twenty-three thousand for six, seventh, and eighth, and half a million for ninety twelve?
There's four grades here as well, and there are more sports offered at the high school than there is at the middle school. Middle school has track, basketball, cross-country.
And the middle school is not.
Soccer.
Baseball.
Baseball. I think that might be it. Here, there's field hockey, volleyball, swim for girls and for boys. There is football, there is soccer, there's baseball and softball. I don't know if there's softball at the middle school or not. I'm not positive either way on that. There's basketball, gymnastics here at the high school, field hockey here at the high school. So there's a lot more sports offered at the high school. There's wrestling here at the high school that there isn't at the middle school. We have silverback for that, but still, there are many more sports offered at the high school level.
So, so the question is, are we shortchanging the middle school on sports?
I would, I would let say, the middle school has other activities, for example, the enrichment after-school program that is that listed here, and that's a big part of the middle school that the high school doesn't have.
Well, still, we got four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars worth of sports at the high school, and at the middle, at the middle school, we've got-
So we, I think we go back and look into, it could be also a coding.
Fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. I mean, it, it seems-
You're also transporting a lot more teams to a lot more games at the high school than you are at the middle school. The middle school fee is much smaller than the high school.
Well, I expect the high school to be more expensive. I'm just saying, four hundred thousand to sixteen thousand is a ratio that suggests the middle school students are being shortchanged.
I think we have to look more at the participation of the middle school students versus the high school students. I know Pat Rizley here at the high school is looking at the numbers of students participating in sports and streamlining that.
Well-
You also have higher insurance for sports. Football is going to command a higher insurance premium than basketball, so, and there's no football team at the middle school.
When budgets get tight, football is a place to look.
No.
It's an expensive sport and it's also, given, given the amount of attention it's now being paid to concussions and their long-term effects, it's a questionable sport.
My son's senior year of high school here, there were six swimmers with concussions, so I think you have to look at it equally.
I understand, and I played high school football, but-
They hit the water with their heads, yeah.
I'm just, it's, it's just the number, the number seems a little wacky when you spend four hundred thousand dollars at the high school and you're only spending sixteen thousand at the middle school. Seems like, seems like we ought to be spending more at the middle school.
I think we also need to take into consideration that at the middle school level, we have Little League and we have youth football and we have-
And we're not paying for it?
That we're not paying for. Those are community events. So the students can go to those things instead of participating in school. Currently, my son participated in CWSA soccer and school soccer. So I don't think there's as much of a need with the community programs as there is at the high school level where they are precluded from participating because of their age.
So can we move to the high school, Mr.?
Yeah, we need to because we're about to run out of time.
Okay, so we have the same areas for the high school. You have all the expenditure, instruction, support services, principal office, facilities, and co-curricular. And again, the same division for support services. So it's very interesting how much money we're spending, again, in English at the high school, at the middle school. Chris, what do we have on the general instruction?
Again, it's the same categories I mentioned before.
Which one is this one here?
The five ninety-six is-
What is the five ninety-six?
Natural, physical sciences is five ninety-six. So that would probably be biology, physics, chemistry.
Chemistry. We're spending a lot in that area too. English, actually, we're spending more in that area than in math.
What, in, in physical sciences, natural and physical sciences?
Yeah.
Well, those are lab sciences, correct?
I know, yeah, we have a lot of those.
Lab sciences are expensive.
They use computers.
So is a sales label a mistake or what's that in the middle of it?
Yes, I think that's a-
A leftover from wherever you got this, a little blip from.
I apologize.
We printed these out at the last minute, so. We're not selling these goods.
Okay, so general instruction is that's the same size paras and whatnot, all right.
The substitute is the same. If you go back to the high school and support services, you have special ed that being one of the, again, one of the areas that is the biggest, and here we do have the speech pathology.
It's really grown when you're from the middle school.
Now, when you, the special ed numbers, this includes transportation as well as tuition or whatever other costs?
No, the transportation, that's not housed here. It's at the, the only transportation that we have here is in the co-curricular activities. The transportation is housed at the, at the central office level.
So, so we're not really showing what we're paying for special ed? Because we transport a lot of the special ed, so if you're talking-
Oh, obviously, yes. Special ed in and out of town is a big piece, but again, it's district-wide, it's very difficult to allocate it to each school, so we keep it at the central office.
But you're showing elementary school students, right? So, so if we really want to tell the public what we're spending on special ed for elementary school students, we should spend, we should include what we're spending on transport elementary school students.
It'll be in the budget book, I assume.
You know, and, and even though the middle school may not trace back to the building, you still know what grades they are.
Yeah, but we did allocate transportation to the schools last year because it's not a central office function.
Well, I'm just talking in the charts here. Where the public's going to look to see what we're spending, it says here at elementary-
It would be in the chart.
If we look at, at the, at the special ed budget for elementary school, it's two point four-nine million dollars, but that's without the transportation.
As I said, we put it in the central office.
So we're actually spending a bunch more than that.
I didn't hear what you said.
If, if the public wants to know, what do we spend on elementary special ed, two point four-nine million dollars is well short of what we're actually spending.
Yeah, it does not include transportation for special ed.
May I ask a question, please? I'm looking at the, the one that says sales on it inadvertently, the two thousand sixteen, seventeen high school instruction budget.
Yep.
If you start at the blue at the one-ten-nine, general instruction, you go all the way around, and it ends at family consumer, which is the ninety-two thousand four hundred and fourteen.
Right, there's some, some list, there was some-
What are those rest of the piece of the pies? Where are we spending that?
Yeah, I'll tell you what they are.
Because those are not at all included in this pie chart. I'm just wondering where those numbers came from.
I'll tell you, because I noticed they were missing, so we just, again, we printed it out late.
Thank you.
One thirty-five is music, one seventy-two is technology, three seventy-three is ESOL bilingual, and one seventy-three is art. I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to know, it just didn't make sense.
There's one more mistake, but I'll show you.
Do all, I'm just looking at this for the first time. Do all of these numbers total up to the three, four, four, including the categories you gave me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm just-
No, no.
And then the other question I had, the two forty-eight, seven forty-two for world language?
Mm-hmm.
That seems like an awful lot of money considering yesterday I was sitting at registration with my son for eighth grade here next year, and the only courses offered were Spanish. Andrew had his choice of Spanish, Spanish, or Spanish. And he's already taking Spanish, so I don't have a problem with that, but we're having a German exchange. We had Mandarin, which is being offered at Barrows, I don't know if it's still being offered at the middle school. There's nowhere to go with it, I don't know why we're still offering it at the middle school level, but there's no other options for them to take. There's no French, there's no Latin, there's a German exchange coming up and no German. Two, almost three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars seems like a lot to spend on one set of languages.
Well, I think, let me answer that question. This depends on the number of teachers we have. And we are looking at offering Mandarin at the high school. The problem is that we only have, we only have, not the teacher, we only have five kids from Barrows or four that sign up for Mandarin for next year. So I gave the directive to offer Mandarin at the high school, but when the, I gave the directive to offer it, but it's based on enrollment, and we only have four kids from Barrows that are enrolling from Mandarin at the high school.
Because there was no consistency of them being able to take it. Andrew started out in sixth grade taking it, and then last year watched Dora the Explorer every week because we didn't have an adequate teacher. So switched to Spanish so he could have his first year of his four years of language that he wanted to take.
You were aware last year, the issues that we have when you're on the board, board chair.
Correct.
The issue that we have with Mandarin teachers. And not only here, across the country. We're lucky to have the ones that we have this year.
I'm not, I'm not blaming us for the Mandarin issues we have, but three hundred thousand dollars when we're only spending a hundred thousand dollars, a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars more on ESOL, and I'm not comparing Spanish to Spanish, I'm saying other places that money could go for the services, for the amount of languages being offered.
So you point two things that we need to look at. One, we do need to research this number, and two, your statement points out to what we were discussing here tonight, that we're not spending, that we're spending a very little bit amount of money in ELL instruction.
Right, no, I, I, I'm not arguing that in the least. I'd rather see some of it get moved there. However, that seems like an exorbitant number for maybe two Spanish teachers.
No, it's three Spanish teachers.
At the high school?
Three Spanish teacher and, yes, the Mandarin was point two and it's gone.
Okay, but even at seventy-five thousand dollars per Spanish teacher, that's-
Plus benefits.
It's eighty-two plus benefits.
Eighty-two plus benefits.
Eighty-two per Spanish teacher plus benefits?
Yeah, average.
Yeah.
For, for world language.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not talking ESOL, I'm talking world language.
World language.
It doesn't matter if they're world language or not, it's based on their years of experience and their degree and where they are in the salary scale.
Now, if you're teaching high school Spanish, you have to be certified in English and Spanish, correct?
German, they have to be certified in English and Spanish? For high school Spanish? No.
No.
For high school Spanish, if they're teaching solely Spanish, no.
No, only in, only Spanish.
Only Spanish?
Only if they're ESOL do they have to be certified in both.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
Okay.